Thousand and eleven hours this year.
Nice, weather seems like a ten o'clock. It's a good thing it's not windy.
And it's free every time the weather gets better and better, so I'm just like.
What future, what future is ahead?
Um, listen, I was with the new Marias, it's Wisconsin and sunny days happy plus.
Maybe Tim and Dave will join us if you're in the panel.
Bravo.
Just do it. Right, Dave.
Damn. Well, we'll get them to walk in.
That's five thirty-one. There we go. Just light it.
Yeah. Yeah. Do I have any control? Sorry. State. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City meeting for Tuesday, July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. A minute late, but that's all right. We'll call the meeting to order. Uh, approve the council agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor Council, I don't have additions or corrections for him.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve the agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Name. Motion carries. Invocations from the Hutchinson Pre-Curcho. All right, um, move the Sabbath home on a silence, please. Next is pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of gifts, donations, and committing service to the city. Does anyone have anything tonight? Mayor, any public comment? Citizens addressing the council, just please come forward, see your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Molly Morfew. I'm Molly Morfew. I live on Pishney Lane. Um, I'm here to complain about the new water usage. I just feel, if you're gonna raise the water bill, that's one thing, but we're not paying. Most of us are watering our flowers or our trees. You're charging a sewage rate for it. It's not going down the sewer. The deductometer, we've been told, that was on our bill. It's so expensive that it doesn't pay to even put it on our outside meter. So you're charging us for something we're not receiving. If you wanna raise the water rate, then raise the water rate. You don't charge us for sewage we're not using. I've heard that from a lot of people. My bill went up thirty dollars. I have three new trees. I have a lot of flowers in the back. I'm not watering my lawn. My lawn is dead. I have four water barrels. I would be happy to use those. I'm getting two more. If it ever rains, I'm fine. I hate using a resource that we could be drinking to water my stuff, but if I wanna keep it going, I have to. So to me, it's unfair that you've raised the sewage rate in accordance to what we're using as water. Like I said, I think you should go back to the old way, and if you have to, if it's a cost issue, raise the water rate then. Because then I'm using and I'm paying exactly for what I'm using, and I know I want, I'm getting used. I'm not putting it down the sewer. It's going down the storm sewer into the river, if anything, but nothing runs off my lawn. It's just so dry. So, and that's basically what I had to say. I don't know if this council's gonna do anything about it, but I just don't think it's fair. I don't think it's right. We're paying for something we're not using. You know, like I said, raise the water rate if you have to. If it, if it's an issue of money and how, but it's just like gouging us who water our lawn. We're not using that sewage. You know, if even if you look at how much sewage, it's like I used four thousand gallons on my lawn, on my flowers and trees. I do water a lot. I'll admit that. And if we have to go under water restrictions, I understand that. And I do try not to water when I don't have to. But it's like, I just feel like with the sewage rate, we're, we're not getting what we're paying for. Any comment?
There is no way that we could track your sewage. That's how, that's how they meter it is by the water.
But I mean, sewage has got to come in somewhere. You've gotta have numbers of what the sewage is, how much, how much you're getting. And if you compare it to how much you're billing people for, there's gotta be a way. Cause otherwise, why are you telling them using four? There's no way to track it. You're just using what's coming in and what's going out.
Because we have a water meter. We do not have a sewage meter.
Okay, to me, then it should just be, just track my water, cause I'm not putting that in the sewer. I'm watering, and it never used to be that way.
We used to do it based off the average of the first two months.
Right.
So there's a very well possibility that, um, that wasn't, that, that, yeah, that wasn't even accurate, though, that, um, that was a two-month basis. So depending on what your water usage was, it was, could have been. So if you used two ga, two thousand gallons in January and February of water, and you used four, five, six thousand of water, we would, there's, you were essentially getting four thousand gallons of free sewage.
Right, and that's, and that.
So that was the purpose. The second reason, too, is that state mandates that cities our size have to have a, um, what's it called, Mike? Uh, con- conservation rate structure that pro, that promotes, um, less water usage. So that was one of the reasons that we had to go to this type of rate structure as well. There's, there are different methods that we could use. Um, there are things that we could consider, the council could consider. Um, I know, like, for landscaping, some cities will, um, provide rentable meters, or maybe meters where you use for a week or two, if you have to water some trees and stuff like that. That's something that we could, um, that we could use for, um, or we could consider for the city. Um, I will say, and we appreciate the feedback, cause this is what's useful for us. Um, we spent two years talking about it, um, with very little feedback from the public. And so some of this is, um, it's a good opportunity for us to hear. Um, but I would say we're not any unusual from what a lot of other cities do when it comes to sewage charge as well.
Yeah, well, like I said, it was just a shock to most people. Most people I've talked to, bills have doubled, actually. The people who water their lawns and their flowers, I was talking to a couple of them, their bills have actually doubled. And it's not like it's critical, but it's just like, uh, it was quite a shock, and a lot of people had no, no, no knowledge what the deduct meter said on our thing. And I know you guys talk about, oops, sorry, you guys talk about this here, but very few people have the leader, very few people that I know have Facebook. They just don't track. Once in a while, I do catch you guys on the TV, so I do try to watch if, if I can. Um, but, but a lot of times, if I'm not home, but I agree. But to me, it's like, then up the water rate, don't up your sewer rate, and I do understand. But if you look at bills from the past year, I've used a thousand to two thousand at the most. And, and to have me paying four thousand for sewage that I'm not using, to me, I'd rather see you up the water rate instead of the sewage rate. Because the water I am using, and I would be happy to pay for that. There's, cause I'm using it. And you have to filter it, you have to clean it, you have to do all the stuff. I do understand that. City has to take care of that. But I have no option right now. If I want my stuff to survive, so the grass is toast, so.
You know, like Matt alluded to, uh, we used to do it from January and February. Well, I had a, somebody complained to me that his kids were home from college. And of course, they all showered and everything else and during that time. So all of a sudden, he's saying that he's, his usage is way up this for those couple of weeks, but, yeah.
And exactly, but this is, this has gone on now, you know, it just jumped. And I don't see, I do see some rain coming. I hope it doesn't disappear before it gets to us. Um, but now it's so iffy when we're even gonna get rain. So what do we do, you know? Um, it's just gonna get worse, you know? To my way with this heat, it just sucks. Everything I watered this morning, I don't, I only wa, try to water every other day. Everything I water this morning, this heat has just sucked it out of the ground. Um, and then you see your plants dropping and wilting. If you spend money on landscaping and your, your stuff, you're just tossing that down the drain, you know? And it is a crapshoot every year, you know, and but two years we've had this. Um, so I just don't know if there's anything you can do, but I just don't think charging us sewage rate that we're putting the water in is right. Because we're, I'm not using that, and most people I know are not doing that either.
For the council's knowledge, you know, we've given the opportunity for homeowners to install deduct meters to where those sewer charges aren't going to be factored in. Now, it is, I think I've heard it's about eight hundred dollars by the time.
No, it's about nine fifty to a thousand. Yeah. And that's just for the meter. So you're looking at huge.
Some of that needs to be, obviously, homeowners need to take into account what value that is and that. I mean, I guess that's something for you guys to know, if there's any desire to change any policy or costs.
Yep, any way the, the city could get a whole bu, bunch of those, cause I know people, I'd be willing to spend at least five hundred dollars. I figure over three or four years, I'd probably make up the cost. If it was about half the cost of it is now, so if we could get like a bulk deal, I would be happy to put it on my outside meters. Um, it, it's, that's just, it's just the thousand dollars, well, nine to a thousand is a little bit much, um, for, for this kind of cost. So if we could get some for four or five hundred dollars, I think there's a lot of people, cause I think we'd make up for it. And then we could prove we're not putting it down the sewer. We're outside we use.
Well, we'll.
Yeah, well, you know, whatever you can do.
Talk with staff and see if there's something we can do.
Yeah, any questions?
No, thank you.
How much is your water going up per month, like right now?
Thirty dollars, just about.
Sure.
Yeah, so to me, that's a pretty big, you know, you open the bill, it's like you used to like fifty-eight or something, it's like six eighty-six and stuff. It's just like, oh.
I'm assuming that's about two thousand gallons?
Four. I, I used four last time.
More than what you normally do?
I, no, I used three thousand more, cause I usually use a thousand.
Yeah, cause what is it, about six dollars a thousand, Mike? Is that what our rates are? I can't remember.
Yeah, it's, I think the base is something, then it goes up per.
So you'd have three thousand, that's, yeah, that sounds about right.
Yeah, so like I said, it's just a little shock, but I know some people who do water their lawn and keep everything very nice, cause it's very important to them. He said he's doubled. And it's just like, more and more people are having to use the hose. Like I said, I know a lot of people have water barrels and they're trying, but if we don't get any rain, there's nothing, there's nothing we can do about it. And when you invest in your landscaping, it's really tough. Um, but like I said, I do know we're using resources that you're filtering and you're paying for. So I guess I'd rather see it on that way, the money, um, because that wouldn't hurt as much, cause I know I'm using your water, you know, that the city has paid for, but it's the sewage that, I'm not putting it down the sewer. So that what, that's what really irks, and it's just like, I'm not doing that.
Very, thank you for your comments.
Yep.
Anyone else? Kobe, you got something?
State your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Kobe Smith. Not used to this formal setting. I guess this is a reference to what I just discovered. I, a few times I've wheeled by the, the now former police station. And I've come to learn that, you know, you actually be put up for sale. But it's not necessarily a reference to that location. I think I just wanted to put on record that a challenge that individuals like myself face nowadays is whether it's your touch or the city's, is accessible, affordable housing. In my case, it even extends to two-bedroom apartments, uh, where have more of a living personal care assistant set up. Because healthcare in general, there's shortage of staff. And I think it's gonna be a matter of networking. But what I would like to figure out is how to set up a place that's like an unofficial system of living, in the sense that it's more of an apartment-style living that has more of a home care agency in house. Because the challenge I have with the system of living is that, yes, I have the staffing available around the clock. They oftentimes don't provide staffing offsite. So it limits my ability to be active or suspended workforce. And that's where I'm kind of at right now. This is where the police station is kind of what you, uh, maybe if I could find the right connections.
Kobe, just so you understand with the police station, um, what, part of what we're requesting, or council's considering later tonight, is that we're doing a request for a proposal, not necessarily a, well, a ten-a-day a prior resolved in the sale. Really what we're looking for is an idea of what that, those billions are gonna be. Um, and then at the end of the day, the council will make a decision, potentially whatever that proposal or, or idea would be. So it's not strictly just highest bidder, we're gonna settle to, it's for some ideas. And are you, are you familiar with the housing study that we just completed?
The what?
The housing study that we just completed.
Oh.
Basically, what I'm gonna say is that what, what you share with us is, isn't newest, it's identified as, as we know, any and all types of housing are in huge need, and, um, I've actually been to a couple of conferences where they've talked about this specific need that you identified. And some of it is, yeah, getting those partnerships together, where, whether it's hospital or to provide some of that housing. So it's not unique to Hudson, as you, as you know, but there are some discussions, I know, that, that are going on there. And I guess, you know, the question for us, is there, are you looking for some sort of, uh, city assistance in that, or is it just an item bringing forward for, I guess, discussion and consideration?
It's like, I have the, someone in particular that may be interested in what I'm talking about in terms of kind of part of their practice is real estate development. And that's kind of where come my, my idea, like, getting a general consensus of where the city's kind of at in those kind of developments as well.
Kobe, I'm on the H R A for the Hutchinson.
Okay, that's right.
So, um, I will bring that up to them, our next meeting. I'll kind of hit on that subject for you.
Okay.
And also, we also, another thing we just went through, the growth planning study, and one of the things that we've heard that's potentially a barrier, or is a barrier, for housing growth is the infrastructure cost. Um, and so I know that's a conversation that we, we actually talked a little bit about tonight, but I know something that we need to have a more in-depth discussion on as well.
Kobe, thank you for asking me in the hallway, one. Uh, secondly is, uh, this is kind of one of my issues that I wanna work with people on, with, so as I mentioned there, I'm going to have kind of a meeting with people in our community who face disabilities and see what those hurdles are. Uh, and then we can look at that and be able to put some plans together and maybe look outside the box a little bit at possible ways of solving those problems.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you.
All right.
Now, I have one question. Are you referring to building, or are you referring more to staff?
Oh, oh, I'll leave both, yeah.
Cause you did mention staff, that you're not getting twenty-four-hour care, and that was your, you're not getting twenty-four-hour assistance?
Well, I guess technically I qualify for twenty-four-hour, um, personal care assistance staffing. That was like, right. I got that approval right when the, um, pandemic hit. But prior to that, like for twenty years, I was only approved for like twelve to fourteen dollars. And then the apartment I have in Minneapolis, there's an arrangement where I can have a live-in personal care assistant. They stay there, um, free of rent with the agreement that they're staying there for free to provide assistance like overnight. And the challenge I had with getting, it was more of a challenge of getting quality people, because all I could offer was free stay. But now that they will offer, um, some compensation overnight, in theory, it would make it easier to find someone. The only reason, the primary reason I have to put it into practice is because I'm kind of in the process of trying to find a different apartment, because the one, prime at now, it's just gotten to the point where the limited, I guess there's a lot of language barriers, so very few opportunities to readily socialize with people. It's kind of like, yeah, another language. It's sensitive to find something new. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Kobe.
Yeah. Great, moving on, approval minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of July eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, and the council workshop of July eleventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion approved.
The, she's by Pat, second by Dave to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
She'll say nay. Motion carries. Consent agenda, this will be done by one motion unless somebody fills some type of, for discussion. A is approval of reclamation of the city of Hutchinson made a practice of policy. B is approval of issuing short-term gambling license to Hutchinson Fire Department Riddick Association on September ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, C is claims appropriation and contract payments, register A.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to approve the consent agenda one. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, nay. Motion carries. Consent agenda two. Uh, consideration for approval of resolution number one, five, six, one, two. Resolution adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of preliminary and final plan for the fourth year addition. And B is claims appropriations and contract payments, register B. Uh, A is, uh, for land that I own, so I'll be abstaining. And B is actually a check to my business and my son's business, so I'll be abstaining from that, too.
I'll make a motion to approve that. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat. So approve consent agenda two, with me abstaining. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, nay. Motion carries. Um, we're gonna skip all the way down to new business, uh, sending out requests for proposal for the old police station facility site.
Um, Mayor Council, we had, uh, previously discussed, uh, I think in a closed session, what our desire was with, uh, these facilities and the direction given to staff at that point, was that there was a desire from the council to sell, um, or to dispose of, um, the former E O C building, the former police station, and then the former police parking lot, which is just directly south of the current police station. And the desire of the council is to do that through a request for proposal, um, process, um, which essentially would give some leeway to the council on, on making a decision on what they felt was best for the downtown area and the community to, to go into that site. And so what I put together for your consideration tonight is a sample R F P. Um, I'm hoping to have an opportunity to take a look at it, to make sure it kind of covers, I think, what the desire of the council was. Um, and if it does, that to formally approve that, and then staff will look to, to, to get that out. Some of the highlights, um, is that we're really given the opportunity or the option for anybody, um, to put a proposal in if they wanna do one of the sites individually, or something combined, or all three together, they would have that, that leeway to do it. Um, truly gonna be open for about two months. We'll provide some opportunities for people to, to do a tour of those facilities, to take a look at them. And then I've even highlighted, you know, what the criteria is gonna be, um, and just so the public knows that, um, kind of listed four items. One would be the, the positive impact fit on Hutchinson's downtown and the community, number of jobs created or maintained, um, purchase price, buyer experience with the proposed use. So really, it kind of opens up for a variety of things. We also do note that it's gonna be up to any potential bidder or proposer that, you know, they're familiar with the zoning code and what would be allowed and what wouldn't be allowed, and that there's no guarantee that if there was a desire to rezone that, that just because you purchased it, that that would be granted, so.
I, I do wanna reference, you did ask in the proposal for people not to contact the city council members, involve the staff, and I agree with that one hundred percent. I just wanna make sure that's reiterated.
Cause at the end of the day, you guys are gonna be the ones making decisions, and it should be as a fair process as possible in doing that, so. So if you're comfortable with what's been put together, I'd just ask that you consider approving that, and then we'll work on getting that out.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, nay. Motion carries. Um, governance, we have the library board minutes from May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. The Hutchinson Utility Commission minutes from May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Hutchinson Housing redevelopment authority minutes from June twentieth, two thousand twenty-three. Chief Jefferson, you have anything for us tonight?
Mayor and Council, good evening. Uh, just one thing, um, got some good news and bad news. Uh, good news is, oh, maybe I'll give you the bad news first. The bad news is, you're gonna have a, a lot of reading time coming up here in the near future. The good news is, is we're almost complete with our Lexipol Policy and Procedures Project. Um, when I stood before you a couple of months ago and said we'd be giving it to you in chunks, uh, I was mistaken. So you'll be getting it as one, uh, draft document, at least the policy portion of it. Um, and, and as it has gone before, you'll have two council meetings to make comment on anything in there and that type of thing, so. Um, rest assured, it's very similar to eighty-seven other counties in the state of Minnesota, so there's probably not anything in there that's really gonna jump out at you as being strange, or, uh, something that absolutely needs to be changed. But, uh, it will be coming soon. Um, I would say sometime in the next two weeks. Um, I'll be forwarding that information to Matt, and then he can get it to you for comment. Um, but that's all I have.
Tom, maybe we just touch on what the Lexipols for the public's knowledge, what they are.
Sure. Well, Lexipol is a company that specializes in policy and procedure management. Um, and, um, all, all the counties in Minnesota use Lexipol, uh, and many municipalities do as well. Um, and really, what their key function is, is to, uh, write policy. And really, what their key function is, is to write policy that can be, or protects the city because it's, it's already vetted previously, so. But the other good thing about Lexa Poll is they provide you with management tools, training tools that go along with your policy. So now you're assuring that all your officers are testing on the policy weekly or monthly, and they have to check off that they've, they've actually read the policy and answer a short quiz, so make sure they understand it. That's kind of the long and the short of it. There's many other things that we didn't subscribe to that we may in the future, but the initial project was just really the configuration of our new policy using some of our old policies, but a lot of it is coming directly from Lexa Poll.
What's the good? Or is that the?
Yeah.
The good news is, is it's almost done. The bad news is the reading. The reading is the bad part. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Leon, you going to tell us about the pool too?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Council. I'm going to give you accurate information that's not on real life in Hutchinson, about the Hutchinson Aquatic Center. Last Thursday, we had some mechanical components that filtered the pool, and it's our leisure pool that we're referring to. So the leisure pool is the pool that houses our lazy river, the zero-depth entry, and the drop pool for the water slides. The filtration system, mechanical components did malfunction. There's a valve and an actuator that control the water's filtration system into our Defender, which is our filtration unit. Those are the two components that malfunctioned, which sent all of the dirty water back into the pool. Knowing that, we closed the pool right away and then looked into where the issues lied within the filtration system. So as of last Thursday afternoon, the pool had to be closed. As we're waiting for the parts, staff have been working diligently to get the pool back up and running as fast as possible, knowing that we can do some overriding on our end as the parts come in, and we're going to be manually controlling that filtration system until we get the parts. As of today, the parts have not arrived, but the pool, the good news is, the pool is now open as of this morning. So staff are working very diligently to continue to monitor and watch the filtration system as we're manually operating it. And then knowing that once those parts get here, we'll, we'll make sure that they get installed right away. Also, knowing that when the pool does close, we're going to make sure that we do a complete overhaul of the system to make sure that next year it'll be back up to fully operational. But as of right now, the pool is back up and running, and if anything changes, we'll obviously let the public know and let you guys know as well. And then knowing that, we will be fully operational until Friday, August 11. And then we do run into some staffing constraints with students going back to school for athletics, going back to college and things like that. We haven't ran into that issue until August 11th is when we're going to have a little bit of that issue.
Not according to real life on Hutch.
That's right, yes.
I like to start at someplace, I hear.
No, the pool, we did not shut the pool down because of staffing. We did have to completely drain, clean, and then refill the pool. So that's why it did take a couple of days to get it back up and going. But we will be fully operational until Friday, August 11. And then we'll go to some modified hours and what that looks like. We'll make sure to update the website, Facebook, and we'll have signs on the doors just to make sure that the public and our patrons are aware of our hours. And then we'll continue to operate in a little bit of a modified fashion for a little while, and then keeping our lap swim and river walking open as long as possible. Any questions about the pool? Okay. And then just have one other update. So we're starting to plan for fall. The fall P R C brochure will go to print August 11. And then it should hit everybody's mailbox the week of August 14 through the 18th, and then registration opens on August 23rd. So for the public, the brochure, as soon as it's completed, it'll be available to view online, but then it will hit mailboxes and hopefully before registration opens. We had a little snafu with the summer brochure not hitting mailboxes before it opened, but it will, it will hopefully get there before registration opens. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Mike, you got anything for us?
Give the usual street project update.
Very neat.
For the summer, good evening, Councilman. And last week, Mueller's were in and completed all of the street patches. We had about 10 patches kind of throughout the city that were related to either winter utility breaks or others. So those all were completed, so we're caught up on that. But by the time we finish them, yet another one emerges, so we'll do some more in the fall. Roberts Road paving is expected to be done Thursday and Friday this week, which will be good, especially with the South Grade Bridge, or excuse me, School Road Bridge closed. They are started on that, that we're hoping will open on the 17th of August. Again, that will be closed for almost a full month, but they're underway with that project. Next week, they're hoping to do the concrete pour and repair, and then it's that two-week cure time. So again, for residents, it will seem like there's a good two weeks with nothing getting done, but it's because of that curing time. But they're making good progress and we expect to open it just in time for the fair and just time for school to start again in the fall, so.
Mike, are they like grinding out cracks and stuff and then filling, pouring back in?
Yeah, like Fifth Avenue, this one also had a little bit more extensive. Part of it's just almost a 50-year-old bridge, so a little bit of rebar work, some deeper concrete work versus a lot of the others were just kind of surface repairs. So you're seeing, you know, some, you know, cuts that are, you know, foot plus. But again, it's looking good. The infrastructure itself looks great, so just, but a little bit more extensive repairs.
Anything else?
That's it.
Matt, should do anything else for Mike? Higher Eddie. Matt?
All I have is just a quick reminder that we do have a workshop prior to our next council meeting at 4:30. That's with Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities will be coming to give their annual report to the city council, so. That's it, otherwise, so.
Next meeting?
That's the, before our next meeting, so it'll be 4:30 on August 8th.
I see Mr. Sabour left, and I was just going to ask, is staff or are we keeping up on on the stuff that's going on in the state with cannabis?
Yep, I actually sent an email out to all the council members today, just kind of giving you an idea of what the new law details is actually, I was going to mention it, so starting August 1st, for the public, so they're aware of it as well, you can legally possess it, smoke it, have it on you. Interesting part is that nobody can legally sell it, but in the state, but you can have it or grow it. And so come August 1st, don't be surprised if you see people smoking it. And right now, we don't have any regulations. I know there's been, I think we had a call today, maybe you guys received a call about eating in public. We don't have any regulations from smoking in public, similar to where we don't have any regulations with tobacco in public outside of, I think, 15 feet from the entrance to, that's the only really restrictions that we have along with, there's nothing that's within the workplace, or even the state law doesn't, you know, allow it in the workplace. So, you know, some of the conversations that we're going to have to have as a council is, do we want to regulate this and to what level? Because we can put limits on the amount establishments, we can put regulations in zoning, we could put regulations on where in public it is smoked. Like I said, the one thing I would note is that we currently don't have that with tobacco. But there are some things out there for you to consider, and I guess, you know, staff's going to lean on the council on whether or not, you know, what level of regulation that you would like to see in the community, so.
I noticed each night on the news, it seems like there's slowly the cities putting up regulations as to, you know, where they're allowing it.
Yeah, it's interesting because I know, you know, I was a part of a webinar today, and I think like 20% of the cities are responding, so we're not doing anything with it. So, but there, yeah, there are some that are looking at, you know, regulating where it can be.
Metro suburbs, which kind of surprised me actually. I just think more liberal thinking that way, and maybe it has nothing to do with that, but it seems like every night on the news, you see additional cities.
You know, we have the option of doing moratorium, but so those are some, some things that are out there. And like I said, I think we're going to lean on you guys if there's a desire to look at something. I mean, I think we'll have to just probably do some general looks at our zoning code, but, yeah.
And at least publicizing what our code is, you know, that way people will be better informed.
I guess I did have somebody asked me, and of course, it was like, I'm sorry, I didn't ask you before, Chief Guiperson, but I know, like, when there is, like, you have a test for alcohol, you know, if we're under, is there some way that you have some driver that's? And I said, I don't know. I said, I'll ask them. So now I'm asking you.
Okay. So if I understand your question correctly, you're asking if there's similar test, like a breath test?
Correct.
Like there is for alcohol? No.
Okay.
I'm not sure that state statute has caught up with legalization anyway. There never has been other than a blood test, and then they could tell you the level of T H C in your blood. But there is nothing, there's no statute or there's no test that gives you probable cause to arrest, only signs of impairment. So an individual could say, yeah, I was smoking cannabis, and they're driving terrible. If they have enough signs of impairment that way, then we could still arrest, but.
Is it driving impaired?
Yes. But there's nothing, there's nothing on the roadside that we can say, like a preliminary breath test where they blow into it and, you know, it says. And even if they did, there isn't an established level of
Intoxication.
Intoxication. That would be prima facie evidence that they're impaired.
If they get the giggles when they're pulled over.
I don't, didn't mean to make light of that, but how you do it.
Yeah, it's, it's, I think it's going to be a couple of interesting years coming up and a lot of case law.
Is there, is there training for your force, like to detect it more, or is that?
As part of our standardized field sobriety testing that we already provide, there is a section on drug impairment, and there are some physical tests that can be run. But again, it, it's only giving you a few minor indicators, it's not an absolute type thing. Any other questions?
I, sorry to put you on the spot, but I just forgot about it.
Yeah, no worries.
I, yeah, I don't know. I think there's a lot of, lot of things that will be coming up before us that we'll have to figure out. I guess, Matt, there's, I'm sure there's lots of cities that are kind of throwing their rules out there that we can kind of.
Yeah, there's options, like I said, to me, it's going to come down to, as policymakers, what do you want? Because like I said, we're, we're limited and, okay, how many, basically, how many do you want in your city? How many establishments? Where do they go? And where can people smoke in public? Those are, for the most part, really, the only three things that you guys have a say in. And so I guess the fourth one would be is if we're going to want to get in the business of it at some point. So those are really the four questions you guys have to ask, or if you feel like there's a need to regulate in city. And what I'm seeing is that some are, are regulating or considering or regulating where in public it can be smoked. And so that's, that's the biggest thing I've seen. And I think the other one is making sure from a zoning standpoint that it's in appropriate locations. I would just caution the council, right now, we don't have anything, even when it comes to smoking tobacco in public spaces, so.
Other than what the state guidelines are?
Yeah, well, outside of the 15 feet from a window and exit entrance, you know.
Eddie, that's something that will be coming down the line, and I'm sure you'll keep us abreast of what's going on within the state, so. Anything else? Well, I'd say let's go home then.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, motion by Pat, second by Chad, adjourn. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both carries.